Would everyone please be seated so we can start again? Caroline, please. Yo, Caroline. Okay. All right, we're going to start again. The next group is residents of East Goshen. And we will go until 9 o'clock and then I'll call it into public comment.
All right, thank you for holding this opportunity tonight for all of us to now speak. My name's Michelle Trivitt, 1430 WANDERPLAIN. And I'm sorry that I hold my back to all of you, I apologize. Really, my comments are directed more to the board. Janet, before we left for that short break, you did mention about some kind of motion would be made, a decision regarding this.
Yes, we will make a decision tonight.
Regarding the 24/7 drilling?
Yes.
Or operations, excuse me.
Yes, this is a single issue.
Okay. All right. So my concern is really with the lack of safety guard, safety that is in place. And I'm really concerned what happens overnight is sometimes not as tightly monitored and regulated. So that's a big issue for me. And I think that the township would be remiss at this point if we don't get some concessions. If you agree to 24/7 operations of the SedoCo Energy Transfer, I would propose that we need to get air monitors to detect any kind of leak and they would have to be permanently located in strategically determined locations where we have maybe highest consequence of lives. And I think that we also have air monitors that are handheld, put into the hands of our 911 responders. Not some of them, but all of them that could be responding to such an incident that could occur along this line. I would propose also that SedoCo Energy Transfer should be the one paying for them, putting them into our hands and also giving us the training on that. I want them to be in charge of helping us as a township with emergency, an emergency plan. And I'm actually paying for that drill, if you will. And I think because we're told we're not allowed to bring your results or anything, or your cell phones, I think that we need to have high, in this high consequence area that we live in, we need to have alarms, air alarms similar to those they use in tornado areas. And we're...
Michelle, this issue is just the 24/7. All that other stuff is not...
It is your fault. But what I'm saying is if you're going to agree to it, then we need to get some concessions in place for safety, period. And this is the time to do it. So if you're going to agree to it tonight, I would really ask that you please consider requiring safety measures be put in place. Thank you.
Brian Sweet, 646 Meadow Drive. East Goshen cannot afford to continue getting a free pass to fossil fuel companies that are destroying our community. We need to hold them accountable to our ordinances every day without exception. Always, dust and time. East Goshen has a signal to energy transfer and other companies likewise that we will apply the maximum resistance allowed under the law to their being here. We simply cannot have the attitude that we want to get the project done and return East Goshen to the way it was before then. Because we forget the next company is going to come right after Mariner gets finished and tear the community up again. This pipeline doesn't benefit our community. It puts the residents at risk and it will deter people from coming here in the future. Do not allow them to pull back 24/7. Thank you.
Christina Morley, I am a resident of Mary Dell Penox. I'm not giving my address because I'm on the ABC board for the township. My first question is for Larry Gremminger tonight. And it is about HDD 520. I would like to know when it became, what is the date that 520 became 521? And one.
You're talking about the one that combined the drills?
I'm talking about, I'm talking about Strasburg Boatree. And on all of the DEP website documents, it is still today listed as S3-0520. But on your map, it is listed as 0521 and there's no reference to it whatsoever on the DEP website. So what date did it become, 521?
Which DEP website are you referring to?
I'm referring to the website where you can read all of the HDD reevaluation reports that you wrote.
Oh, that's because there's no reevaluation on that particular one.
Okay, so let's talk about Boatree-Strasburg then. Because that is here in East Goshen. In January of 2018. And I'm talking about this because it is literally 750 feet from my, I'm sorry. Janet, you have a question?
Trying to orient.
So I'm talking about Strasburg Boatree. Right off of 352. Okay, so in January of 2018, there was a report that was submitted to the DEP. It had no signature on it. But it was accompanied by a geology and hydrogeology report by GES. They follow each other? So GES clearly states in that hydrology and geology report that they did not do that work. That was the work of two previous contractors, Tetra Tech and TerraCon.
Are you talking about the vertical geopack boring?
Yes. Six borings. Those are these two reports right here. On March 13th, the DEP responds and they want to know who wrote that report.
Which report?
The report that was unsigned, that was then referred to as the first report. You wrote that report.
I wrote that report.
You wrote that report. The DEP says it was unsigned by a professional of any kind and it needed to be signed by a professional, a geologist, or a licensed engineer. Did that ever happen?
Yes.
I see no evidence of that. I think that you signed...
That's a change, we've changed the policy. If you look at the most recent evaluations since that point in time, that was a decision by the department. The geologists will not sign off on a directional drill because they don't drill, they don't design drills. An engineer will not sign off on a drill or a direction of drill because they're not drillers. Okay, so the engine, if you look at the current reevaluation process that we've worked out with DEP, it said the professional geologists provide an opinion on the geology and the hydrogeology and the risk potential for an inadvertent return. The engineer signs off on the engineering of the profile as it relates to the stresses on the pipe and the curvature allowances for the combined pulls, okay? And then I sign as the drilling evaluator as to what's going on in the overall picture.
Okay, that is your response. But here it says clearly in the DEP response...
Recall the letter.
A Pennsylvania licensed professional geologist and engineer will have to sign and seal the first report as well. They acknowledge that the second report was signed by both of those, but they still wanted your report to be signed by both an engineer and a geologist.
And I just told you...
And that never happened.
And I just, man, I just told you, you could go pull up all of them since that date and all, they are signed by all three of us.
Sir, I have all of them here and they were never signed by anybody other than you.
That's because...
No, now this is important because, I'm sorry, this goes to the heart of it. But sir, what are your credentials to be writing HDD reevaluation reports for a very geologically sensitive area? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm not yielding my time. You are, and I'm not addressing you again...
You're addressing ours, us as a group.
No, I'm addressing Larry Gremminger. What are your credentials to be writing HDD reevaluation reports? I'm sorry, what are your credentials...
This is the topic for tonight, it's 24/7. And that's it.
And my point is, is that DEP went on to question the fact that those six bore samples were not sufficient and that further geological testing needed to be done and that Boatree-Strasburg...
Excuse me, we have other people who wish to address the topic for tonight.
And those surveys were never done. Furthermore, you are a certified wildlife biologist. You are not qualified to be writing HDD reevaluation reports. You are not qualified to be answering Ron Coco's answers about PHMSA qualifications. And you are not qualified to be standing here talking about, about whatever else you answer this evening.
Speak back, in fairness.
Please, cathartic protection. And I would also suggest that maybe you are even violating the code of ethics for your certification by practicing outside of your area of expertise. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Vanessa Metropolis, 28th School Run. My question is, you're so concerned about safety and it's safer to drill at night and it's 24 hours a day. But we don't have an emergency plan in place. And when people are sleeping and something happens, what's the plan in place? But when there's more people in their beds asleep and not knowing something's going on?
So I think one of the keys here is we talked about is any time of day. For example, right now we work 7:00 AM till 10:00 PM. We have one gentleman who talked about beam and shift work. So everyone's lifestyle is a little different. You know, just going back to a point that somebody else has made in terms of working with fire companies and others in terms of training and communicating. Some of that, you know, has been done in terms of educating them on what's on the lines, what's going on, the same process.
Why are you a strong member of this township and have had no training, no information?
In fairness, that's been offered.
No.
Are you a first responder in the area you're in pipeline? The Goshen Fire Department?
I'm in, I'm in Westchester.
So...
And I live in East Goshen.
So the focus for first responders has been, and I don't know if there's anybody here from Goshen Fire Department, they can correct me if I'm wrong, but there's been numerous trainings been done there. And with every fire department, that's a first responder along the line. In terms of to address that, I, you know, I'm not sure, you know, where, what department you're with in Westchester and it doesn't really matter there. My point is that Goshen Fire Department and others that are first responders for a township like East Goshen, there has been training. They've been fully trained in terms of awareness on what's going on. We've worked, communicated, shared, you know, all of our planning information documents with state agencies, the county, and even coordinated in terms of with the township in terms of, you know, other opportunities for not just training, but, you know, prepare this player.
I implore the township to not do the safety plans in place and people will not sleep in their beds. They're not thinking about our safety, I would hope that you think about your residency.
Melissa DiBarnina, 1602 Old Wurtem Lane. I want to start off with a question for you guys. So in you went down to, when you went to their board asking for 24 hours so that you could do their dual pullback, they said that they wanted information from you, like prove that it actually was safer for continuous pull. You did not provide that, so they didn't give you the allowance to do it. So you only pulled one pipe back at a time, or you did the first one so far. Is that how it's going to be here? If you don't get permission to do 24-hour work, will you be pulling both pipes still or just one?
So every drill site is unique. The ones that we highlighted that are in green and show 16 and 20, the current plan is to do the dual pullback. That could vary, that could change, but that's the plan, whether we have 24/7.
Okay, so I feel like with a project this dangerous and you can't have as many changes as you are. You just can't just fly by the seat of your pants. I mean, can you, do you have, why don't you have any information on the Giant or Carriage Drive? You're still figuring that out.
Oh, you're asking why we don't have information on those drills? Like the timeline? So the one, the 471, the Village Square Drive, and then the other one, Eldridge, at the other end of town, that's the one that we mentioned in terms of, for a start date, we need a response from the DEP. Larry talks about some data reports, so we can't give an answer. I'm sorry?
For Carriage Drive?
For Village Square Drive and Eldridge Drive.
So when you say then Green Hill, is that from the firehouse to Giant?
Yeah, yeah, essentially. And then Carriage is a short one that starts there by the Giant in Wellington and goes to the Iron River.
Okay, I just want to call it, okay. Got it. I have concerns with just pulling one pipe through. Definitely have concerns with two. And I just want to know when best practice became such a concern for you guys? Because you don't seem to worry about it anywhere else. I mean, like PHMSA has gold, who's out advising not to repurpose and redirect old pipelines? Do you guys do that?
That's not...
According to American Contractual Pipeline Association, best practice for HDD includes protect any exposed ends of pipe if necessary from foreign materials. You guys have been terrible at that for over two years, whether it's installed or not. Verify that the one call, even one is believed and the utilities are marked and defverified. Paco's hit Mariner 2 because you can't input that. I just want to know why this is such a concern now.
So in terms of, and again, right, the focus is on 24/7, yes or no? But to answer your question, the three points you made. Just to clarify, because it's not really accurate. In terms of PHMSA recommendations for repurposing pipelines, it's not a yes or no. This stuff is much more complicated than kind of the binary piece. But they said, if you're going to do this, here is what you need to do. And there are directions that we follow that are exceeded. You know, one thing that's key for a pipeline safety piece for PHMSA. So DEP or narrative here within noise ordinance, we're looking for an exception to that rule. From a PHMSA standpoint and a pipeline safety standpoint, there are regulations. You meet them and exceed them or you don't build. So we are meeting or exceeding regulations.
According to Larry, though, giving the decibels, you're already breaking noise ordinance regardless of whether it's day or night.
Well, Larry talked about five feet away from equipment.
No, he just gave somebody nine, talking about 300 feet away.
So in terms of talking about how you're looking for an exemption to do that work. And in fairness too, we're talking about, we're asking for an exception in terms of nighttime work in a decimal and being able to work from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. That's what we're asking for. And the two things are very different in terms of a noise ordinance versus a pipeline safety ordinance.
Okay, I'm just pointing out that you absolutely can't be trusted for anything because you never cared about best practice. And we've just been asking for years for information for a plan of some sorts. And here we are, we meet again two and a half years later in this very spot and I know no more than I did last time I spoke to you. So. Hi, guys. You guys know how against at the same. This is not me just being, you know, anti-Mariner. This is me being pro-safety. These people cannot work in the middle of the night, okay? Other than the fact that people shouldn't be like roaming streets of East Goshen in the middle of the night, workers and stuff. I need you to think back to Lisa Drive. They had 24-hour work approved. They were working in the middle of the night and when the sun rose, there were multiple singles. Now, they don't own their houses anymore there, they own them. I am pleading with you not to give these people anything. They've given you nothing, they've given us nothing. Well, I could go on, thank you.
Tom McDonald, 646 Thorn Perch Drive. Just a couple of questions first, and then I'll go first and then to the board. You talk about risk management, we had a young couple here before. The risk management, to me, is just a cost issue. You're not talking about safety or health, you're just saying it might be more expensive if something happens while you're pulling through during the day and having that 10-hour shutdown. That's not a good enough reason in my book to disrupt everyone and take those chances. From a cost standpoint, the other issue that was brought up was the $129 compensation. My mother lives in Wellington in assisted living. There are 64 people in assisted living and 120 are still nursing. The facilities, you're not going to get those facilities anywhere else. I can stand in the back talking to these guys all night long. They're not going to have a doctor on staff 24 hours, not 24, but during working hours. There's nurses on each floor that manage their medications. There's bathrooms that are handicapped accessible, my mother's in the hospital bed. The $129 and $61 a day for food is not going to cover it. There's nowhere for those people to go. And that's close to 100 people that are, there's nothing, there's nothing you're going to be able to do for those people. And they can't even come here tonight to speak for themselves. And this afternoon, on behalf of my mother. So I just wanted to make those comments to you guys more than anything. To the board, you made a comment to Michelle just a moment ago that you're going to make a decision tonight. Have you heard from Carmen? Has Carmen weighed in?
Carmen is unsure.
Okay, he's unsure, so there's four of you. Rick doesn't have a vote, does he?
No, he does not. So the four of us are in form and so the four of us can vote and make a decision.
Okay, I got to be honest with you, it's a little troubling that you started this meeting saying you're going to make a decision tonight when the DEP hasn't even weighed in and won't wait in for another two months on what they're doing. And yet you guys are making a decision tonight. I don't know if...
Our decision is strictly on the 24/7. That is all we are discussing tonight.
But, okay, so if, but they can still change what's going to happen when you find out from the DEP whether or not they're doing what they can do is possible or not. You're bothering me with the key to that.
It has nothing to do with, yeah.
No, I know, but they're still not quite sure what they're going to do or how long it will take depending on DEP. It could be 36 hours, it could be five, six days. The DEP could say, "That's true." Say it could be two months.
That's true.
You give them 24 seconds for two months then.
We're just doing 24/7 and we have no idea for how long. We, that...
Is what I'm getting at. The DEP could say that 24/7 could last 72, 72 days like it did in Middletown. And that, that's what I'm saying, there's got to be a cap on it to a certain extent. Because you don't know, they're, Janet, they're not sure what they're, three of the five locations, he doesn't know what, how long it's going to take them. And you're saying, you're saying you're ready to vote tonight. I'm not sure how you can do that.
The one piece, to be clear, I just want to make sure in terms of, starting about the time to basically when they would be done. I think in each, each location, there's an understanding on the approximate time that it would take to do the pullback, both 24 hours or without 24 hours on all, on all of these locations.
Okay, so on some of those locations, everyone kind of odd, rude and odd right at the beginning. You didn't have those numbers for three of those locations, I think it was. And here we're getting ready to say 24/7 and I'm going back to Caroline's comment, it could be 24/7 for three months. And, you know, I don't know if the township signed up for that. I'm shocked that the board's willing to vote on that tonight, not knowing what 24/7 and/or if you don't do 24/7, how long that's going to take.
So the one part, and just to be clear and go back and Ron, get me if I'm off in this, but these are all approximates. But moving from the top to the bottom, so Green Hill Road, the top is approximately, I believe...
40 hours or five to six days.
Right, so Carriage Drive...
Carriage Drive, you didn't have an answer to.
Was it 28? That's the one I mentioned, I think I mentioned, if you remember, that's a short one.
What's the answer?
So the expectation is we may not need it at all. In a good scenario, you'll be done within the timeframe of regular working.
We've seen a lot of bad scenarios happen at the township. Yeah, good scenario, you got to come years ago. That didn't happen. The next one, the 3700 square feet, or 3700 feet, again, no answer.
So the 3700 feet, that's the Village Square Drive. Again, you're looking about approximately two days, 48 hours.
Why couldn't your contract to see that when this meeting started? Why are you coming up with that now?
It turned to, I mean...
What I was mentioning is that we weren't sure as to when we'd start it. It was, how was it?
See, we're not talking not sure. We are talking not sure, that's not good enough. And we've been living not sure for months and months, for years.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to go back to that, in terms of that miscommunication or not. But go through and be clear in terms of those timeframes. Am I being clear now in terms of...
But why can't you be clear at the beginning? Because nobody asked a question? Do you want to have that fudge factor?
No, I think sometimes it's, you know, in terms of communication, it happens all the time in terms of somebody saying something you don't understand. So I'm trying to go back and make sure that we're after what...
Okay.
Whatever after the, at the beginning. So there's no, there's no confusion on that piece. So the Village Square Drive, you're looking approximately 48 hours with a 24/7, five to seven days without 24/7. Pinyole Pike, I believe, I believe Ron said that, you're in the same timeframe, 36 hours-ish, five to six days. The Eldridge Drive...
Is that the fifth one?
That's the fifth one, the 500.
Yeah, that one, I wasn't sure about either.
Ron, help me if I'm off, I'm looking through my notes to make sure.
Why are you looking at, are you talking consecutive days, four days, four days, four days?
So each of these locations, they're not all going to happen simultaneously, the drills. Okay, so this is per location section. And it would be at both ends of the drill, obviously. So as I'm looking at this, so skipping over Eldridge with North Chester Road, I do think you covered that, but that was five to six days without the 24/7. And Ron, help me in terms of, so the Eldridge Drill 500 is about 2100 feet approximately. So what are we looking at in terms of... So in the, in the 24 to 48 hours? So 24 to 48 hours in terms of continuous and if it's, if it's non-continuous, what is that? So, what is it?
Again, there seems to be a lot of uncertainty. And again, this stuff, I thought, this meeting was planned a long time ago. I thought you guys would have these numbers like that off the top of your head. The fact that you're going back and forth right now is kind of disturbing. But to the board's point, to make this decision with not, with these guys not having these more determined numbers and the fact that the DEP hasn't signed off on some of this stuff, I don't know how tonight you can sit here and say that you're already, you're ready to make it without having heard anyone yet to start the meeting saying, "We're going to make a decision tonight." It takes some time to consider this stuff, okay?
It's after 9 o'clock, you've already spoken before, right? Well, it's 9 o'clock, I'm, it's the end of public comment, please. It's, it's the end of public comment, 9 o'clock, it's done. Okay. You're limited to one minute because it's after 9 o'clock. One minute.
So we've heard you constantly hide behind statutes and things relative to risks that are reimbursable to technicians and salespeople and so forth. Period. Don't let you play that game. But right now it's pouring in Texas and I would hope SedoCo and Energy Partners will step up to help those communities. And they all have funds for that, for disasters. You've created a disaster here in our community. And I'm challenging you to pick up every nickel and dime. Forget about federal regulations. It'll come out of your whatever fund. So that we can put people, that are elderly, families with kids, in extended stays, not hotel rooms. But they don't have to worry about the cost. They don't have to worry about other things. And if they have to get special transportation, that's on you too.
Thank you so much.
You weren't invited here, but let's see you step up and do the right thing.
Thank you. Okay.
I want everybody to know, if our township confirms this, Sunoco can do this.
Okay, because public comment is over for you two. May I?
Yes.
Have a motion?
Yeah, I would, I would like to make a motion. First of all, I appreciate the representatives from Sunoco being here tonight and feeling questions and sharing the best of their ability, the information that they have available, and they've been provided by their corporate and their attorneys and their, their internal workings. Folks that are here tonight, our citizens, we, we hear loud and clear your comments, articulate, emotional. And as we said tonight, the focus is on the request for the 24/7, and with regard specifically to our ordinance, and whether we're going to waive that for this particular request. The motion that I will make is that we move to instruct our noise control officer, also our zoning officer, to deny the request from Sunoco to work 24/7 during the pullback operations.
I'll second that.
Any discussion here, the DEP?
None here.
God, I can make a comment. So I, I've read all the survey document, thank you for returning those surveys, that amazing response. A lot of people took the time to write comments regarding their feelings, appreciate that. I read survey documents and technical documents from adjoining townships. I read Sunoco documents, I read engineering studies, tried to do some of my own homework. One of the studies in an adjoining township, the professional engineer concluded that based on the anticipated geotechnical conditions and results of our pullback load and pipe stress calculations, we believe that the risk to the project presented by the required stoppages during pullbacks are not excessive. However, the probability of an occurrence is not zero. We don't live in a zero, lack of risk environment. I didn't hear anything from Sunoco, or read anything in the studies, that our geotechnical conditions are unique or increase the risk of ore collapse. And so, from my perspective, you know, two days to six days, we have ordinances for a reason. And it's to protect our residents from excessive noise and sound any contractor working in, in our, our township. And our job is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our residents.
Ready to sort of vote, all in?
You have a second?
We have a second. All in favor? Okay, the, the motion has passed, we have turned down the 24/7. If you have a motion, you're adjourned. Second, okay, all in favor? We are adjourned.